...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we start, I just want to welcome Commissioner Lawrence Eddy to the County Commission, and I look forward to working within the next few years.
I would just like to add, Commissioner Tab is reelection bid.
All right, let's move on. We're going to go to approval of minutes for November 1st, 2018.
I move approval of the minutes from November 1, 2018.
Second. Any discussion?
I just have a minor correction on number 10A under the motion in the middle of that. It's just typos. It should be project be charged to the remaining balance. Just clean.
Anything else? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next is approval of minutes for the November 13th, 2018, general election canvas.
I move approval of the minutes for the November 13th, 2018, general election canvas as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Approval of purchase orders for November 15th, 2018.
I move approval of purchase orders for November 15th, 2018, in the amount of $78,082.63.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next up is approval of accounts payable for November 8th, 2018.
I'll move approval of accounts payable for November 8th, 2018. I'm thinking I have it totaled here, but no, that looks...
I think it's the 124.
Is that the 124, 62185?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any discussions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next up is approval of accounts payable for November 15th, 2018.
I move approval of accounts payable for November 15th, 2018, in the amount of $354,839.37.
Okay, just one thing. The previous accounts payable, are those check numbers at the bottom then?
They are.
Okay, so we need to amend that after this motion.
Because it's okay, right.
Yeah.
Those are our quarterly...
Dispersment.
No, those are impact fees, sorry.
I'll second your motion for November 15th accounts payable.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So then...
Going back to November 8th?
Yeah.
November 8th was 34,918.13.
Right, that's okay. I withdraw my previous motion for the November 8th accounts payable, and we'll make a new motion. Is that procedure okay with everyone?
Yes.
I move that we approve November 8th, 2018, accounts payable in the total amount of $34,928.13.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We'll move to approval of accounts payable for November 29th, 2018. Yeah, I'll move, we approve $470,351.21.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We'll move to approval of manual checks for November 8th, dated as 9th on the agenda. I'll move that at $124,621.85.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next up is manual checks for November 15th, notated as 16th on the agenda.
I think that's the $35,000. No, it's okay. This is confusing.
It's not our form. It's from the county clerk.
They need to fix that, yes.
Something must have gotten cut off, but I will talk to them.
I'll move it to $118,485.70.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Then approval of manual checks for November 30th, 2018, and I'll move that, it's $37,251.68.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. All right, next up is approval of payroll for November 1st, 2018.
I move approval of payroll for, well, I have the November 1st, $259,992.24. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Then approval of payroll for November 8th, 2018, poll workers.
I move approval of November 8th payroll for poll workers, $47,610.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, approval of payroll for November 15th, 2018.
I move approval of payroll for November 15th, 2018, in the amount of $275,621.69.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Do you have any announcements?
I just have a few. I'm going to move my IT support position to next week. I'm not quite ready to present that. And then, I think, it's the last thing under county administrator reports.
Okay.
And then, I think we're going to try and limit Nathan's update to the...
Yeah, okay, so for agenda item number nine, because we have a meeting next week, and there's a lot of stuff on the agenda today, the first four bullet points on nine will not be discussed today.
Nope, I want number one discussed.
Yes, I do too.
I want number one discussed today.
I want to know where we are in that, what's actually happening. As far as the staff, I really need to know. I mean, I think...
Any other commissioners have any remarks on that?
I'll just make a comment. I think Josh is trying to make some adjustments. I have to teach a class at Shepherd at 1:50 today, but I don't want to...
I mean, I don't see any reason why that can't be put off till next week. There are other pending litigation that will take substantial amount of time that is far more important than a minor update.
I disagree, Josh. I disagree with that, and if Ralph has to leave, Ralph can leave. The rest of us can discuss it.
Okay, well, I'm going to move that to next week, though, unfortunately. So, I want to focus on the other lawsuits concerning Rockwell, the JCDAs, and other more important issues.
Well, it's just as important as the other thing. I mean, after all, we are giving up control of the PSD. We gave it to Charles Town. I think there's some things that need to be discussed. I understand that they're going to closing on December the 5th. We had got a terrible deal in that deal. The county has no representation except for one person on the board that's to be formed with Charles Town. So, the people in the county who live outside the county are going to be at a loss because they have one person out of five making a decision for everybody that lives out in the county on that board.
Okay, so as President, I control the agenda, and I feel the JCDAs and Rockwell suits are better adequately spent rather than the first four.
I think we need to discuss all of them.
So, I mean...
Well, I think what's going on with the PSD and the Charles Town Utility Board and the City of Charles Town is all wrapped around the same axle with the Rockwell issue.
Absolutely.
And we all need to understand where the representation is and what the legal formation of this new body will be and how it will operate.
Okay, we can leave it on, and the public can figure out why exactly they want this on later on. So, we'll leave it on then. So, we can see exactly why they're pushing so hard to have this agenda item on. That's fine.
While you're pushing so hard to take it off.
That's fine. No, I'm putting, because we are at the end of the road of this, and there are far more exacerbated issues as far as Rockwell, the JCDAs, et cetera. We currently don't have a quorum at the JCDAs right now. So, if we want to spend time on issues that are already...
And whose fault is that?
I'm not quite sure. You can elaborate on that when we talk about it later, so. All right, so, other things. Agenda item number 14, discussion of Board of Health, Sanitarium, and Septic approvals. Dr. Didden is going to be coming in around 11 o'clock, and we'll have some discussion regarding that issue as well. Other than that, I think the agenda is as it is. All right, so we'll move to public comments. Tim Ross.
I think you all have a lot more better things to do than listen to me. I just wanted to congratulate you all and hope you do the best, so.
Yeah, I'm going to...
If you don't mind, if you're going to make public comment, can we please just come up just for the record?
All right, okay. Is it working? Okay. Congratulations, Commissioner Lawrence Eddy, Commissioner Tab, and I just wanted to ask you all to please relocate the plaque, and let's get as much transparency and accessibility as we can in all county operations.
Thanks. All right, Ruth Hatcher.
Good morning.
Good morning.
November is Lung Cancer Awareness Month. Four years ago, I thought my husband had lung cancer. He did not. But I did not know at that time. It was, November was Lung Cancer Awareness. Anyway, Frederick Hospital was very nice to give me some information. It's in the back of the room, and I would highly suggest people take a brochure. If you've ever smoked, if you've been around asbestos, and you know, back in the old days, everybody smoked. So, you take a CT scan that is a low dose. My husband goes once a year, and it's highly important that he goes, because he was exposed to asbestos at work, so that puts him even at a higher risk for lung cancer. And you do not usually have symptoms, and that's the bad part. So, it's sort of like your breast cancer awareness. I think this is the fifth year that they're trying to get this out to people, so please tell everybody about this. It's very important to me, and it's also very important to me that Rockwell does not come in, because this would probably increase the lung cancer risk. The toxic emissions in the air obviously are not good for anybody, especially our children. And nobody, when you go to the doctor and you talk about your health, he never says, "Oh, by the way, let's put your head in some more pollution." Okay, that is really not, you know, your doctor's not going to advise you to be in an area where there's high risk of pollution. And I don't think any child says, "Mommy, give me a smoke stack across from my school for Christmas." Of course not. That's ridiculous, correct? Absolutely ridiculous. So, we need to put that plant in a different location besides our county. Number two, also, in Europe, they're talking a lot about what we're doing, and I have articles for you, which you may have already have, you may not. And they're watching every move over here in the county, obviously, to the T, and they believe that this is just the next best asbestos, basically. And so, you really need to be aware of that, because there are tons of lawsuits about asbestos. So, if you're promoting the next greatest asbestos, you need to be very aware of what's coming down the pike. Okay. Thank you for that.
All right.
And I'll have articles for you.
Next up, Eleanor Finn.
Good morning, Eleanor Finn for the League of Women Voters. Couple quick things. Please, Josh, ask people when they come up to speak to say their name again, because it's not always easy to pick it up when you say it.
Okay, it should be in part of the minutes, though. That so-and-so spoke when the minutes were released.
Are you on another trial run about Thursday, second or third Thursday evening meetings, or are you just going to do that from now on, to have them in the evening?
We decided at the last meeting that we were going to do that. We were going to stick with the evening meetings on the third.
Not another six-month check?
No, there was no time limit put on it, but we can revisit it at any time.
Thank you. And I know that there was an alert that came out regarding the JCDAs availabilities. Is it advertised in any other place other than the alert system?
I mean, generally, we can't go back and forth with public comments. I just direct your questions to the administrator after.
So, if there's an opportunity during the discussions about the JCDAs to make sure everybody's aware of where information is available. Thank you.
Thank you. Danny Lutz.
Good morning, Commissioners. Danny Lutz, Cabletown District.
I have another copy for everyone to have in common. You pass them off. Three minutes isn't very long. That's right.
I've given the Commissioners copies of three petitions. The first one I would call your attention to is titled Petition, County Home Rule Over Hazards. This is part of a statewide initiative to get legislation before the legislature to give the county commissions who have home rule authority the absolute final control over what can come in and pollute our environment and what cannot. The second one, it will also have some interest to the county commission, probably favorable interest, and it states, "We, the undersigned residents of Jefferson County, demand that all air quality permits issued to Roxel International and its subsidiaries seeking to transact business in West Virginia under a variety of names by the West Virginia Department of Environmental Protection be rescinded effective upon approval of this measure by a vote of the people of Jefferson County, West Virginia." The third petition, "We," and this one is not going to be very well received, "we, the undersigned residents of Jefferson County, West Virginia, demand that the payment in lieu of taxes agreement reached by the Jefferson County Commission with Roxel International and its various subsidiaries seeking to transact business in West Virginia under a variety of names be rescinded effective upon approval of this measure by a vote of the people of Jefferson County." I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. All right, I'm going to have a hard time reading this. I think it's DM or DN. Did anybody write in blue ink? I honestly am having trouble reading this. It says me, yes, and something...
Me.
Oh, David Tab.
David.
My hands are cold.
You look like they're frozen.
They are. I've been out working. David Tab, Jefferson County resident. It's after a month of not seeing everyone here. Again, I appreciate everyone through the process of the voting issues and who came about with that. I just hope that all the pledges and structures that were made during the forums and everything are upheld, and I'm disappointed that the other candidates and stuff and other elected officials that are not here right now are not continuing as I have and some other people have to help the county, because all of us need to be here working, even though we may not agree with each other. We need to work together and get these things done. So, I believe we're going to have a lot of snow this year. We've already been hit pretty hard, and since nobody takes into consideration of what I do, I hope the rest of y'all invest a couple hundred thousand dollars in equipment to help our citizens when there's a lot of snow, because that's what I've done in the past. I also would like to show you, and it's pretty thick, this is the appeal to TEMA. I got the permit changed. I'm one of the few people that's ever gotten that done in the air quality permit process, and EPA even stepped in and changed it, but then they turned around and approved it right away. You should step up and say no, because there's supposed to be public hearings and everything when there's a major rewrite on a permit. You have that authority. You have that responsibility. Now, I had to learn how to do an appeal to the Air Board, which nobody posted. All this stuff is supposed to be done. These are legal matters. And also, within the structure that I'm citing y'all, that you haven't done proper Open Meeting Act, you may have someone else joining you within that crowd. The school board seems to be in the same predicament. So, was that my three minutes or somebody else's?
Maybe so much.
How about it?
How about it? Okay. So, anyway, again, this is an appeal process that I think is going to come into play with Rockwell as well, because these postings of the information and everything was not done proper, and the written permits for Rockwell and everything were incorrect as well. I've done a lot of research. As you can see, I've put a really good packet together. We're going to find out whether or not these permits and stuff are going to stand, and I've also put myself out there for the application for the Jefferson County Development Authority, so that you would ensure to get maybe 40 or 50 people that you would encourage to do it, so you wouldn't put me on it. So, we hope that we all can come together and get some of this stuff done. We got some really bad problems, and if you would come to me and speak to me...
Thank you, sir.
I don't think that we'd have to go down the street as often. Thank you.
All right, does anybody else wish to make public comment? Oh, so you'll be right next.
I was on the list, I'm sorry.
Just please state your name.
It's going to be short and straight, okay? I just wanted to congratulate you guys for winning the election, and I wanted to commend you for opening your eyes and seeing what of a wolf this company really is in sheep's clothing. They really want to come in our county and rape us, our land, and then move away. And I'm glad that you guys have taken another position and see what's going on. I'm a homeowner. I'm a very concerned citizen. I have two acre lots, one and a half miles from the property, and two of the lots are on hold right now. They've been perked, and we're going to put the wells in, but I'm a little leery until we feel a little bit more confident, and then my children can pay the impact fee. And, you know, I'm agreeing with all these things. I've been here for 45 years, and I love this county, and I don't want to leave. And that's all I have to say, and I thank you.
Your name for the record again?
I'm sorry?
Your name for the record.
Gina Biller.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Susan Pipes, Jefferson County. I do want to thank, or I do want to congratulate Ralph Lawrence Eddy for having a seat on JCC in Jamestown. I believe that everybody right there is a good mix of what this county actually represents, and I do hope that with all five of you sitting there, that you realize that you're the voices of everybody in this community, and hopefully that even if you may not personally agree with what's going on, that you will listen to the community, and if you might have to, you might have to table something to find out what the majority of people are saying versus what maybe you believe in. I also, and that's personally, you did have an agenda, and sometimes we may not agree, and you may not agree. I do believe that what Patsy brought up has probably, should have been followed, but again, that's a personal thing. As we move forward to make it right, a lot of people have pointed out that we do not want to destroy anything. I do believe that at some point, the plaque needs to be brought back up and just simply moved. And I also hope that the community overall stays involved, not just because of one issue, but there are many issues, so that I hope that this room continuously stays full to be able to learn about what's going on and to also, basically, like I said, stay involved. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, is there anybody else? Ma'am?
Hello, my name is Barbara Stiefel. Thank you very much for the opportunity to come here today. I've been a resident of Jefferson County for 28 years, and I've served on the Blue Ridge Watershed Coalition, and I was also on the Executive Board for the Rolling Ridge Foundation for over four years. I've been a part of this community, and I care about it, and I would like to stay here. My faith in my municipal government, my state government, and my national government has been changed from faith to fear. I am not interested in politics. I've been a yoga teacher in this county. I've worked with teachers. I've worked with students. My entire interest is formulating a substantial, sustainable lifestyle, and for me, that includes farming and living high thinking and simple living. The movement in this county has forced me to act today and to speak up. What I've seen is issues around the sewer, that there's incomplete data going into the volume of water and waste and the type of material that is going to be outputted from the Rockwell factory. I've also seen problems around home rule. If you look at the Rancin webpage, you'll see the county commissioners are currently listed as Lynn Winmeyer and Walt Pelish. That's an insult to this commission, that your names have not been listed on the Rancin webpage. Just a little bit of idea of the professionalism that's lacking. I was an economist for the federal government in international affairs for 28 years. I've sent each of you a letter yesterday regarding this impact economic study that's a piece of trash. They use a standard piece of software to plop in the address, and that was about it. There's no metadata, meaning there's no resources, references, or footnotes anywhere in this 25-page document. For anyone to make a decision, especially one with the magnitude financially in this county based on this economic study, is ridiculous. Any high school student could have done a better job on this economic study than was done by Deloitte Consulting. So, what I'm suggesting is with all the failed data that you've received regarding sewer, and many people have spoken about the air permits and the issues regarding that, I haven't even begun to think about that, because that's my area of expertise. My area of expertise is economics. I have a master's degree from George Washington University, an undergraduate degree in economics, and like I said, served for 23 years as a professional economist. You have been given incomplete information. This position that you hold is very important, and it's complicated, and it's not easy. I, as a citizen researcher, have spent the last two months going into this, looking at this, spending so much of my energy and time, taking time away from my family, taking time away from my home, taking away from my health. I have a new wrinkle today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? All right, we'll move on. Ms. Angie Banks.
I think I saw a hand come up.
There a hand back there? Oh, sir, please join us. Just please state your name.
My name is Ned Marshall. My name is Ned Marshall, and I want to congratulate Mr. Lawrence Eddy on his victory. I hope that you can... I hope that you can work better for us to get rid of Rockwell. I know it's going to be a hard task, but I think it needs health and the economy of our county. But the other thing I wanted to say is, I would hope now with the new, with the new, with the county commission re-adjested, that you can get rid of the plaque celebrating the Confederate soldiers that shot at the loyal citizens of our county. I hope you can do that today and have it removed immediately. Thank you.
Good morning. I am Sarah Thompson. I just wanted to congratulate our new commissioner, and I'm looking forward to seeing great and exciting things the next few years, and, because now it looks like I've got more people on there that share my views of the world. So, congratulations, Commissioner Ralph, Lorenzetti, and Jane.
All right. We'll move on. Ms. Angie Banks, Assessor, Exonerations.
I have three. The first one is in our 2018 Personal Property Book, Harper's Ferry District. The taxpayer should not have reported the 2007 Dodge Charger for their eighteen, 2018 taxes. Assess value, twenty-six hundred. Tax amount, sixty-one dollars and nine cent. The applicant is John Cunn, ticket number three zero eight one four nine.
I move we approve the exoneration, ticket number three zero eight one four nine, as presented by the assessor.
Second. Any discussion? In favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
The second one is in our 2018 Personal Property Book, Charlestown District. The taxpayer should not have reported the 2005 Skion for July 1st, 2017. Assess value, fourteen hundred. Tax amount, thirty-two dollars and eighty-nine cent. The applicant is Kimberly Stickman, ticket number three zero four four eight zero.
I'll move approval of the exoneration as presented by our assessor for ticket number three zero four four eight zero.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
This last one's in our 2018 Personal Property Book, Cabletown District. The Toyota Sienna was not registered or located here July 1st, 2017. The applicant is Dewey Wolf. Assess value, eleven thousand two hundred. Tax amount, two hundred sixty-three dollars and sixteen cent. Ticket number three one one five three nine.
I'll move approval, excuse me, I move approval of the exoneration for ticket number three one one five three nine, as presented by the assessor.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next up, Mr. Matt Harvey. Discussion of staffing needs and potential new hires.
Good morning.
Are you in, sir?
So, I'll start off with just bragging about the maintenance department. Charles, Tyler, and Dean have been working very hard in my office this week. As you know, the Gray Building is fully occupied by the prosecutor's office, but we didn't have use of the basement until recently, and we've now cleaned that out. All the files have been disposed of properly or put in permanent storage, utilizing space that we currently have in the magistrate court building. And we have taken items, we've taken cubicles from, that were in storage at maintenance, and we've basically created a victim's advocate, a whole floor, a suite. They have a conference room, separate bathrooms. We've, as you know, we've added an additional victim's advocate in this past year. It's a part-time position, which I'm going to be asking to, for a replacement for the young lady who recently left. So, we have a whole new suite. Everybody's excited at our office. It's given us a lot more space upstairs for the lawyers, and, but more importantly, there's, will be an area for children that, if they need to stay at our office for a long time, so they can develop relationships with our victim's advocate as well as our prosecutors, so they're more comfortable and, and just, you know, being more comfortable, to helping us do our job. So, it's really exciting, and hopefully by the end, it should be finished in the next couple of days, but I will add some more stuff to it, but we invite anyone to come over, maybe after the first of the year, and I'd like, I'd be proud to show it off, to show you.
Just to see it.
And it costs zero dollars. That's the exciting part for me.
I know. It's great. I know that that basement was utilized for a long time as a magistrate court, because I sat there for about ten years.
And we repurposed one of the magistrate court benches that was removed when the Circuit Court Room was replaced in the third floor. So, we have one of those down there as well. And I'm leaving the scuff marks on it, just the way it is.
To make it authentic.
Right. That's where the police officers sat, you know, their gun belts hit the bench. Anybody that's spent any time in court would know that, but.
I don't have a question, you're using the basement. And I know the back door of the basement is probably your handicap entranceway.
It is.
Is that labeled any way?
It is. There's, it probably could stand to be labeled a little better. That isn't going, we have SEJIS, our building has to go through SEJIS protocols, because we now run NCICs, and we have sensitive information. So, we still have to restrict as many people as possible to come through the main entrance, because they have to be signed in and escorted through the building, and we don't want people using that back entrance on a regular basis for that, for security reasons, and we're also going to make them use the elevator and not to stay, to stay off the steps. But it is still available for people on wheelchairs. Paul Rosa comes by the office, and he's pointed out to me some things that probably could be done a little better, and mostly it's just in labeling. And we have a constant, Ralph, you were only in that building a couple of months, that, the doorbell, we have an awful time with the doorbell. Maintenance is there every couple of weeks to reset it, to fix it. It's been very maddening.
What's the problem?
I don't know. I don't know what the problem is.
Does it ring all the time, and nobody's there, or what?
No. Worst, people are there ringing it, and it's not chiming inside.
Get a ring camera, get one of those ring joints.
I went out and bought a, like a forty dollar doorbell, just slap the chime on the other, it's old fashioned, and it, it, the one that has the cameras, it doesn't, yes, the one at my house works a lot better than this one, the ring. Anyway, we'll.
It's not a problem that we should be able to fix pretty easily.
Yeah. Just two wires.
I'll tell you what's going on there.
Well, I think it's supposed to ring into the computer first.
Yeah, there's something, obviously, more to it. I hate, I didn't mean to go down this rabbit hole, but it's been, it's been a burr under our saddle the whole time I've been there, but we're.
Because if that's the, if that's how the public can access that building.
That's right.
With.
But we, I have someone seated there, so that's kind of the fail safe.
Okay.
So, I guess my question, is this really a staffing need or a doorbell need?
No, 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 no. I don't know how we got talking about the doorbell, but I have, I have some people I'd like to hire, and I tell you, my employees that are there now really want me to get these people hired, because we're four positions down. And I'll just go ahead and tell you, I'm not asking to create any positions, and I'll just go ahead and say this is all budget neutral.
That was going to be one of my first questions, but thank you for that.
That's always my first question.
Yes, yes, yes. Because we've had, we've, we had, you know, a few people, I spoke last time about Mr. Hellman leaving to go to the feds to go, or become Assistant U.S. Attorney, Federal Prosecutor, and we've carried a couple of positions open and for some time now. And so, the first position I'd like to fill is, is you've already approved, her name's Jamie Green for the part-time position. I'd like to elevate her to full-time. That, again, is, is not a new position, it's just replacing a position that was already created. She's doing a fantastic job. She's really good with our new case management software. It's very intuitive for her. She's way, way more advanced at computers than I ever was, so she's fantastic. So, we'd like to elevate her. Do I, do you want to vote on each individual or all at once?
We can do it, I think we can do it all at once.
Yeah. And do you have the salary levels too, so we can approve that, or?
Yes. Do I need to, do I announce those now?
It has to be in the minutes in order for the, in order for it.
Okay.
Them to be on the payroll.
Okay. It is, her salary is twenty-five thousand. And the next position that I would present is Diane Batt for the part-time victim's advocate position. And Diane is, this is incredible that she's coming, wants to come to work for our office. She's a really tremendous addition, just a great person, but she has a master's level in social work. She has a tremendous amount of experience in working with victims, but also substance abuse, which is a lot of, a lot of overlap in the two. So, we, with her, I see us being able to expand our services to victims as well. Because, just because, you know, you can have an addiction to being a victim for crime, and, and so, I'm really excited about bringing her on. Her position is, because it's part-time, it's either, I think it's eighteen fifty or eighteen seventy, I think it's eighteen fifty an hour for twenty hours a week. And now, I have two lawyer spots that I'd like to fill today. The first, I'm going to talk about a gentleman named Adam Ward, who was a, he's a Commonwealth attorney, which is the equivalent of a prosecutor, a West Virginia prosecutor. He was the actual number two, in the number two position in Louisa County. He has a tremendous amount of experience. He's handled murder cases, serious felonies, robberies. He's also had a, he's also, in that position, did a lot of administrative, had a lot of administrative responsibilities. He's, he's, has a great personality, very, very nice man. He'd be an exciting addition to our team. The last one, and, oh, his position would be starting at eighty thousand. And he has about five years of prosecutor experience plus other lawyer experience. The other position, last but certainly not least, his attorney position would be Deborah McLaughlin. A lot of people are familiar with her. She was the elected Morgan County Prosecutor Attorney for nineteen years, and most recently was a, was a circuit judge, and sat in this county for some time, several months, almost to a year. But I think she, besides her obvious prosecutor experience, the fact that she was a judge in this county and observed our, my office operating from that side of the bench will provide us some valuable insights as well.
Is that her salary?
Ninety thousand.
I have a question for Stephanie, I guess. Back when I was doing Matt's job, you know, we'd gotten into all those schedules and everything. We had horizontal and vertical. Do we need those numbers anymore?
So, what we did is, we, during budget, we adopted a range, and we got rid of the steps. So, as long as they're in that range for their grade level, it's, you're good. And it's budget neutral, so he has the money in his budget. And you've spoken with Michelle Gordon, Finance.
No, but I have taken the previous budget, and, and normally, I do do that step, but, but this is not even, we're not even really close to the limits.
If these are within the range guidelines.
They are. I can tell you they are.
Okay. Very good.
I, I.
They are.
I never check. I just.
They are. I know. They're within. For all of the positions are within.
Well, I know if they weren't, we would know about it.
Yes.
And I would ask if I could get a copy of those ranges for future reference, just not.
But I didn't adopt those for my office, those ranges.
Oh, I know you didn't.
Yeah, right.
We did.
You did, but I didn't, and that's kind of that weird position where we found some contrast, but, but I will check next time, but with these.
They're within the range now. That's, it's all good.
They are. They're all within the ranges. I can tell you, having, having worked in that office, they're well within the ranges for attorneys and for support staff.
Now, Mr. Ward, am I, do I have that right?
That's correct.
Now, he's practicing in Virginia. Does he have a West Virginia?
Yes, he does have a West Virginia license. I'm sorry.
Okay. Just wanted to be clear on that. We didn't want to send him away to training.
Oh, no, 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 no. No, he, he does have a West Virginia bar license, correct.
Because there's actually a rule for the, under the rules of professional conduct, if you're working for, if he didn't.
Right.
If you're supervising him under the rules of professional conduct, he can, because it's a prosecutor's license.
No, but he's a fully licensed West Virginia attorney.
Is Ms. Green going to be full-time?
She's, she's going full-time. That's, that's our hope.
So, is this twenty-five thousand additional, or it is a full-time?
That's the full-time salary.
Wow. God bless her.
She, I mean, I know that sounds low, but she's still a college student.
Okay. Well, I didn't.
And she takes online classes. She's finishing up her associate's degree.
Okay.
And that's why she would be slotted at that range.
Well, that makes a lot more sense to me. Yeah.
So, is your office, like, fully staffed now because of this, or are you still, like?
This will make us fully staffed.
Okay.
All right.
Operating to where you think you need to be operating?
That's correct.
Okay. That's correct.
Well, I'll move that we hire, that we authorize Matt to hire Jamie Green at twenty-five thousand.
Can I come back to that question Josh asked?
You can talk to us in February. Just out of curiosity.
I could give you a hint, like, of where I think this office needs to go as far as potential staffing needs, and it is to, it's in the victim's advocate program, as far as making that part-time a full-time position. And I'm going to try to find some money in my budget to accommodate that request, but I am coming with that in next year, budget year.
To, I mean, do, to that point, I mean, do we have any sort of comparisons between counties on, like, staffing levels in certain departments, and maybe what departments within a department are more staffed in other areas, like victim's advocate, et cetera? Just out of curiosity, are we, like, not funding enough victim's advocate based upon, like, the average prosecuting office in West Virginia, or something like that?
Well, listen, I, I, look, I can answer that, and we do have probably, at two and a half, that's more than most offices in West Virginia, but I don't want to compare, they're, they're way understaffed. So, I don't want to go backwards on that. They need to, every office could use five victim's advocates, because we have a responsibility under the West Virginia Code to notify, at the very least, just notify every victim in every case about their court date. That's the minimum that we have to do, but we exceed the minimum. We also make sure they understand the process, get them into counseling, things, things like that. So, I would, I would hate to look at other counties.
I just think, I mean, so you think ours is better, they're doing a better job?
Absolutely. There's no question. I think we have the best one in the state of West Virginia.
I think it's, it's, I mean, it's difficult to compare us sometimes to other counties on anything.
I think, I think it should be pointed out, I think you have a VOKA grant too, that sort of helps.
You have a grant, correct.
That helps keep the, the number a little bit higher than the other counties.
Is that on a yearly basis, or?
It's yearly basis. It's around eighty thou, it's been, we've, we've got it up to about eighty thousand dollars.
Doesn't pay it all, but helps.
It doesn't pay it all, and, and.
Yeah, we watch that.
Here's, here's the problem with the VOKA grant, and I'm very grateful to have it, but Debbie Young has to administer that grant at my office, and that really keeps her behind the computer. It's so form-intensive and data-driven, it's, it's, it's almost a full-time job in of itself, so it keeps her doing what she does best, which is work with victims. That, if it, so it's like a, it's bittersweet. It's bitter, it's, you know, we have, we have eighty thousand dollars that we can offset costs, but it also costs us almost a full position just to administer it.
How many years have we gotten that grant?
Years.
Well, really, since the victim advocate was first started, we've gotten that grant.
It's about nineteen, nineteen years-ish?
The reference in the state.
No, it's a, well.
It might be more than nineteen years.
It's funded, it's, well, it's funded, it's funded by the feds, and it's a pass-through, so I think they get federal money, but then the grant itself is applied through, through the state.
It's, it should be pointed out, it basically starts with money and penalties to criminals, then it goes into the feds, and it comes back. It's probably not as efficient as it should be, but technically, it was, it was a theory to get the criminals to pay for, for the victims, but it's, in the past, the feds have diverted the money to use it for other things, and sometimes they do very well giving the money back to the states, and sometimes they don't.
I know that every court cost that goes through the Circuit Court and the Magistrate Court has a victim of crime account.
Right.
Listed there. Listed there, and so everybody that files anything in the court system also pays. I think it used to be, what, two, uh, three dollars for everything that was filed, and I guess that went into the pot, and then the, comes back to us.
Is that separate than the, the Crime Compensation Fund, which also...
Probably the same.
Probably the same, which is...
I think that's the same, and it could've changed since I was in the first office.
As a victim of crime, there are a limited amount of dollars that you could get for medical bills or counseling or something, some sort of restitution that you probably won't get otherwise.
I was just getting to the chances of potentially losing it.
It's different.
You know, it, uh, one, if, if the county, um, would have a full-time grant writer in grant administrator position, um... I would also...
Yeah.
Would be fantastic.
With all the grant money that we get in this county, it would take, it would take more than one position to be able to, uh, what we do, what needs to be done, but it's, uh, so worth it. Berkeley County has a grant writer.
They do have a grant writer, and they're getting all kinds of...
And she is fabulous.
It pays for itself almost instantly.
Yeah, in fact, they, I think they were just hiring another one because she's so busy, and they needed, they needed somebody else to help her, so, but she is great.
That, that would stop me from asking for another position.
Poacher?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, let's poacher.
So, Patsy, do you wanna finish your, your motion?
Is it time?
Sorry, yes, I will, I will stop talking.
That's, that's all right. Um, I move that we approve the hires of, of Jamie Green at twenty-five thousand, Diane Bat, uh, Victims Advocate at eighteen dollars, this hourly, for twenty hours a week, Adam Ward, um, who will be an attorney, in a prosecuting attorney's office for eighty thousand dollars a year, and Deb McLaughlin at ninety thousand dollars a year.
Second.
Any discussion?
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you, sir.
All right, next up is, uh, Martin Burke, Jefferson County Historic Landmarks Commission, requests for three thousand dollars to abate asbestos and remove debris from Duffield's Depot.
Good morning. Um, my name is Martin Burke, I'm Chair of the Jefferson County Landmarks Commission. I would like to echo, uh, Matt Harvey's, uh, request. The Landmarks Commission survives on grants, and having a, a full-time grant writer in the county would, uh, benefit us immensely. Um, the commission's request is straightforward, we are asking for a three thousand dollar cash match for a grant we received from the Two Rivers Giving Circle to mediate, remediate asbestos and debris removal at the Duffield's Depot, the oldest combined, uh, passenger and rate, and freight railway station in the United States. Uh, six thousand dollars will be spent on one contract for asbestos remediation and debris removal from the right side of the depot. Um, this is the depot as it appeared in nineteen ten, or two thousand ten. Yeah, um, um, the wooden portion of the building on, of this building, uh, on the right collapsed in a windstorm in February of two thousand eighteen. Uh, bids were solicited from two contractors in Global Environmental and Remediation of Kearneysville, West Virginia, was the lowest bid at six thousand dollars. Uh, the JCHLC has confidence in Global Environmental since we have worked with them in the past. Uh, the Duffield Station, Inc., a nonprofit organization, purchased Duffield's Depot in, uh, two thousand six with plans of restoring and renovating the building as a railroad museum. Duffield's Depot was added to the National Register of Historic Places in two thousand seven. Fundraising for site work and renovation stalled in two thousand thirteen, and there's been little activity since, um, which caused Duffield Station, Inc. to gift the depot and the land to the Landmarks Commission in February of two thousand eighteen. Since February, the commission has been fundraising, writing and submitting grants and clearing the left side of the depot. Um, these are before and after shots, uh, on October third, two thousand eighteen, which shows the, the clearing of the, of the site. Uh, since it, and cleared the left side, which is in this image, in the additional image from a different vantage, um, uh, of the station master's house with the assistance of volunteers and contractors. The Landmarks Commission's immediate goal is to stabilize the stone, which is the white portion of this building, um, station master's house. After the site is cleared and the building secured, there is a long list of additional projects. The commission has already received four thousand dollar grant in October from the National Trust for Historic Preservation for an engineering study to understand the surface and groundwater that fills the basement and take corrective action. Additional projects, like a structural evaluation, rehabilitation of both the exterior and interior, and deciding on the future use of the building. Um, each of these projects, when each of these projects become a higher priority, the Landmarks Commission will seek, uh, funds through public and private sources. All projects will be guided by the Secretary of the Interior's standards for the treatment of historic properties. The expected outcomes, uh, for this request are the asbestos and debris removal from the site will allow, uh, will ensure public safety, allow safe access to the building for assessment and future planning, and the project will benefit the preservation of the, of a national register and county landmark. Um, we can, and this is, this is the area that we're expected to clear, um, on the, on the right.
So you, besides removing the debris, you say abate asbestos, so what type of, I mean, it's an old building, is, was there like blown-in insulation, the tile on the floor?
Yes, it's the masticant and the, um, the formation of the tile, and during debris removal, it, it possibly come, becomes airborne.
Yeah, I just thought with it being so old, it wouldn't be there, but, you know, I know there's no guarantee.
This house, this buil-, the building was lived in until, uh, the nineteen sixties, so...
Really? Okay, wow, okay.
So there were many additions and renovations that, so...
You were here a few months ago. Did Landmarks realize that this issue existed prior to taking ownership of the building?
Uh, no.
So, I mean, I just, I, I think going forward, prior to taking ownership or title to any property, to look into things such as this, so it doesn't result in a financial issue. I mean, granted, this is not extensive financially, but just in any regard, I mean, if you took ownership of another building and the issues were far worse than this, that could be an issue. I mean, if you were required to have to fix something, and it was like fifty grand, I mean, those are issues.
Um, when I was here last, and for asbestos removal, uh, we have subsequently, for the Eiler House...
Okay.
We have raised the money, and for that demolition.
Is this a secondary, when was ownership taken at the Landmarks for this building, exactly?
Uh, February of two thousand eighteen.
Was this after the ownership at the Eiler House?
Yes.
Okay, so now we have two properties that Landmarks has taken hold of, and they both have asbestos problems.
Yes.
Okay, so, just, I think going forward, we should research issues rather than taking, granted, they are historic houses, but if we're gonna take ownership for free, I think the owner should remediate some of these rather than become burdens to taxpayers, unless you're raising the funds, which you have done, which is great for the other place, but... That, that's my only comment on that. Uh, Michelle Yow...
I was just texting you. Great minds think alike, yeah.
Uh, we just recently completed our fiscal year sixteen audit, and as part of the fiscal year sixteen audit, the State Auditor's Office has combined Historic Landmarks Commission and with our audit, um, so that means that we're going to receive one bill. Historic Landmarks Commission won't receive a bill at all. They have not increased our price. So our fiscal year sixteen audit was completed for both us and for the Landmarks Commission for thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, the Landmarks Commission has twenty-five hundred dollars earmarked for that audit that they will no longer have to pay. Um, I would recommend that we not bill them for their portion of the audit so that they may free up those twenty-five hundred dollars to cover a portion of this. And then if the commission wishes to fund the remaining five hundred, I would recommend using coal severance fund.
So, so our audit did not increase as a result of them being added to it?
Not for fiscal year sixteen, for fiscal year seventeen and eighteen it may, but for sixteen it did not.
That's what I was just texting you.
Okay, hopefully the difference, how much was the audit prior to you all being, I guess, how much was their audit?
Theirs was twenty-five hundred dollars.
Okay, so hopefully our increase is not more than twenty-five hundred dollars.
Right.
Well, and I think the state, and I'm glad they are doing that, getting all our boards and commissions audited at the same time with our county budget. So, uh, that makes a whole lot of sense and lets the, um, public get a true sense of what our figures are and what's being spent, so I like your solution.
Yes, thank you.
That's good. So basically what, what we would be doing if we approved this is to, uh, use the twenty-five hundred dollars that would've been used for the audit and just adding another five hundred dollars.
Correct, we would then send them five hundred dollars out of the coal severance if you choose to approve that, and then they would free up their twenty-five hundred dollars that they would've sent to the auditors.
Right.
Right, okay.
Does, does their board have to approve that, though?
Yeah, they have. I was gonna say, does that work for you, Mr. Burke? Do you see any issues with that?
That, that works for us.
Okay.
So then the motion would need to be to approve five hundred dollars to, uh, or from the coal severance fund that, for the Jefferson County Historic Landmarks Commission remediate the asbestos in, uh, in the, uh, Duffield's Depot building. So that's my motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Thank you, sir.
Now, before he leaves, let me ask, I was looking at the list of commissions and boards, and I saw Mr. Anosco had been on this board, I was wondering if I'm supposed to show up at their meetings?
I was gonna mention that, 'cause it's a weird time of year, it's like December, so I don't think we're gonna reappoint the boards until January, so if it's okay with you and the other commissioners, if you just take upon your, Anosco's former seats for the last month, then obviously come January, we'll reappoint to other boards.
That's actually under my report, yeah.
Okay, well, then, we just took, took that.
Good, take that out, take that one, yeah.
All right. My question, do you have a meeting in this month? When do I need to show up?
Uh, in this room, on December twelfth.
What time?
Seven o'clock.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on. Uh, Charles Basden, West Virginia State Commander, Military Order of the Purple Heart, proclamation, declare Jefferson County as a Purple Heart County in the state of West Virginia. Please join us, sir. Okay, just state your name when you sit down, please.
Those chairs roll, so be careful, hold on to it before you try to...
They are purple, which matches your shirt.
That's right.
And I think also sort of matches the color of your truck that I saw outside.
I was in the parade in Martinsburg the other week, for veterans. I have a plaque to present to the board.
And what is your name, sir?
Tom Riley.
Tom Riley, okay.
Military Order of the Purple Heart, Special Recognition of Board, is bestowed with pride to the Jeff, Jeff, Jefferson County, West Virginia, for your dedication to what are an American, held by all the veterans, becoming the Purple Heart Country, County.
Photo? Care to take a photo?
Well, let us, uh, pass the proclamation.
Yeah.
Jump the gun.
I move that, uh, we pass this pro, uh, proclamation, Purple Heart, uh, and it declares, uh, Jefferson County as a Purple Heart County in the state of West Virginia.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, hold the camera.
The designated area Ralph is in, we're gonna, we're gonna see. And here's his camera. Suck it in.
Don't be shy, everybody's...
Gotta get close, Ralph.
Great.
Are you there?
Thank you so much. All right, uh, Stephanie?
Yes.
Uh, when may he get a, uh, copy of the proclamation?
Um, I'll have Sandy, you can probably get it this afternoon, I'll have Sandy print it out on, do we have it printed out on? She already has it. Okay.
Just a, just a matter of signing it.
I can go do that.
I can sign at the break, even.
Yeah.
If he hears... Wait just a minute, we'll get it right to him.
All right, we'll, we'll just take a break, I'll go sign it, we'll come back at eleven and get back on schedule then.
Here it is.
Oh, well, you wasted no time.
She must've been on the...
You might not be watching. I think you are.
Thank you, Sandy.
Let's still take a break.